Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, August 24, 2021. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Deb Hart. I see Deb Hart. Deb Hart.
Hart.
We'll come back. Marquess, here. Myers.
Here.
Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess. Deb Hart? I have a visual on Deb Hart.
Okay. Well, okay. So, thank you all for joining us, who are joining us electronically. I just wanted to mention that there is a new feature on Zoom, and it is a Board of Education video feed. It reads as BOE Video Feed. You can pin that on your screen, and that way you can watch what's going on in the room while you're also listening to the board meeting. So that someone working with our staff came up with that, if that's something that interests you. And then I'll also just remind people that if you're interested in running for the Board of Education, your petitions are due this Friday by 4:00 p.m. So those will be returned over to Laura. And so I hope everyone's considering running. It's a great service to the community. Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, and then our next time is I'd like to make a mo- Oops, excuse me. Our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Richard and second by Kitty. Thank you. Okay, and as always, we'll start out with the superintendent's report.
I need to take roll on the motion.
Sorry.
Garcia.
Yes.
Deb Hart.
Yes.
Marquess. Yes. Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess is not present. Motion passes.
And now the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Marquess, board members. It's so good to see you all. Since our last public meeting, we have brought our kids back to school. Want to thank those board members who were able to join either myself or staff members as we were in school for the first week. I would say the theme of the first week was happy. Teachers were happy to see kids. Kids were happy to be back in school. Just felt incredibly joyous, and for those of you that had a chance to go visit our schools, you felt that as well. I also want to thank everybody for following the necessary precautions, right? And making sure that we're all staying safe. And just very excited that we have our kids in school, again, board members and for our community. Our goal is to keep kids in school five days a week for the entire school year. And so as we think about our precautions, that's the nature of the things that we're doing. But it's really nice to welcome our kids back to school. You will be hearing board members in a moment information item of our kind of back-to-school update, and so we'll be covering lots and lots of topics. Long presentation, but only one information session this board meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to get through that pretty quickly. And I just want to thank everybody in our community, the board members, staff, that came to the Impact on Education Gala last Friday night. Impact on Education, for those who don't know, is the foundation that supports the Boulder Valley School District. They raised almost $250,000 over the course of that evening and then into the weekend with some silent auction. I just want to thank Allison Billings, Executive Director, Impact on Education, board members, and just everybody who helped donate, and really thankful for that partnership. I had a powerful keynote from, hopefully I get his last name right, Eric Weinheimer, and who was the first blind person to summit Mount Everest. I just recently wrote a book called No Barriers about his story of kayaking the Grand Canyon as a blind person. So just really inspiring, really a great way, I think, to kick off the year. So thanks to Eric, and again, thanks to everybody from Impact for a wonderful evening and for all the support you provide for BVSD. So that's all I have for my superintendent's update.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Anderson? All right, then we'll move to public participation. As always, or again, just note that we're still having public participation virtually. And if you wanted to speak this evening, you would have needed to sign up prior to noon today. And then you are given instructions on how to get into the waiting room for the Zoom call. So the board respects the right of the public to speak on matters concerning to the operation of schools. We believe that public comments are critical. However, sorry, I'm sorry. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you do choose to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. So for those who address the board this evening, we ask that you confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. We do not have any speakers tonight, so all speakers will be heard in the first hour. If you run out of time, or if you want to share additional information, please email us. We read all of our emails, and it's very helpful and effective to send emails as well. Finally, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Therefore, please make your remarks suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. So you will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and Laura will have that. It's that light yellow card. When you have 10 seconds remaining, you'll see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments, and at the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. So we will start with a student speaker, Mina Most.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Mina Most, and I'm a junior at Monarch High School. COVID was very hard on my mental health, and when we finally got back to school, I was terrified that I could catch COVID. I knew regardless of how careful I or my friends were, I could still be exposed by classmates that didn't follow safety procedures. And I knew for a fact some of them didn't because of in-school conversations and social media. Going back to school with a mask is an inconvenience, not the only thing between me and a deadly illness. And with newer variants, more and more kids my age and younger are getting sick and dying. From the week of July 29, there was a 33% increase in child cases in the week before, and over 300 kids have died. That may seem like a tiny percentage until it's your kid. Our school district definitely has many things we need to work on, but the education is top-notch. Parents send their kids to school to learn social responsibility, how to tell truth from fiction online, and how to respect people who know more than they do. Yet, listening to the parents during board meetings, it's clear they might need a refresher in these critical skills. I encourage them to have conversations with their kids. Anyone who's taken high school biology has learned about vaccines, viruses, and how masks prevent them. Your kid knows how to spot fiction online, and they can help. As a captain on the Monarch Speech and Debate Team, I've had to learn how to sort through biased information, and the truth is, masks save lives and stop the spread of the virus. I was a counselor in training over the summer at a camp with strict COVID protocols where no one got the virus. Masks aren't causing hypoxia. I've personally worn a mask for seven-plus hours while working at the grocery store, and healthcare workers go 14 hours or more with masks and full PPE. Vaccines are safe and effective. It might be an inconvenience to wear masks, but the only other safe option is to go back home, and that's not an option for most. Thank you, BVSD, for listening to scientists and keeping your students safe.
Okay, our next speaker is Carissa Schultz. Okay, our next speaker is Michael Gata.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Dr. Michael Gata. BVSD, ignoring all credible science and data without any logic, explanation, or supporting evidence, has again decided to force children to wear masks for several hours each day at school. BVSD has acted against the recommendations of the CDC, World Health Organization, and the state of Colorado to impose this draconian, harmful, and inhumane policy. This policy is based on lies, not science, evidence, or data. There are at least eight same Colorado public school districts which are mask-optional: Adams, Aurora, Cherry Creek, Douglas, Pueblo, Littleton, Steamboat Springs, and District 20. Are they all stupid? No. Because county, states, and countries that do not mandate masks have fewer cases and deaths than those that do, and the delta variant death risk is minuscule. Those are the facts. A survey in my daughter's school showed half of the children had adverse health effects from masks. A German study on 26,000 children showed that 2/3 were harmed by masks. Dr. Urbina once again is making stuff up without providing any supporting evidence when he claims that children do great with masks. Now, this is important. There is no asymptomatic transmission of COVID. That means that if you are not sick, you cannot make anyone else sick. That means that masking or distancing healthy people is useless. If you care about ethics of children's health, do not interfere with their breathing and simply recommend they stay home if they're sick. It is immoral for BVSD to impose this bizarre misguided ideas of what is safe on any individual, even for claimed benefits to a large community. We, parents, request a written report on the specific evidence and data you're using to make this inhumane policy by August 31. And no, it is not good enough to say Boulder County Public Health said so. They've been dead wrong about most COVID policies they've come up with, doing immense harm with no benefit to people in Boulder County. It's time to wake up and do the moral and ethical thing, and leave health choices like masks up to individuals and families. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Meg Berry. Okay, our next speaker is Gretchen McLaughlin. Okay, so that concludes public participation. So we'll move to our next item, which is board communication. Kathy, are you online? Okay, who would like to go first?
I am, but I don't have anything to add, Gina, thanks.
Okay. Who would like to go first? Richard, did you ever hear him?
Sure, I just want to thank the district staff, the superintendent, and everybody for a really smooth start of the school year. It was a wonderful start. I visited nine schools myself. I went to Lafayette Elementary, Centaur's High School, Angjuvine Middle School, Pioneer, Ryan, Sanchez, Uniheal, and Columbine. And I also want to thank Andrew, and Laura, and Rob for being at some of those particular schools with me, because it was just a great, great feeling to see all those kids very, very happy to be in school, and then the parents also very happy, especially at Lafayette, because at Lafayette Elementary, I was able to see the parents bringing in the kids. And man, were they just joyful and just so glad to have their kids go into the buildings, okay? And the teachers were also very, very excited and very emotional about it in terms of them just thanking everybody that we're in session five days a week. So it was a really, really great time, and I want to thank again the district for allowing these school visits for us to attend, and great. I also want to thank the two speakers that came and spoke today. Mina, I think you have a lot of courage in terms of what you said. I really appreciate your comments. And the other parent, well, I also appreciate your comments, and you also have a lot of courage. So thank you very much.
Who'd like to go next? Kitty?
Well, I also went to some schools for a first day. I went with Dr. DeLa Cruz, and it was great. We went to Birch, and Broomfield Heights, and Broomfield High, and Ri- Cole, sorry. And I can't say enough. It was just, the kids were excited, the teachers were excited, just like Richard was saying. And at Cole, I spent quite a bit of time there with the principal, and one of the things they're doing, you know, all the schools, they have their own T-shirts. Well, their T-shirt said "One Degree," and I asked about it, and they said it's the one degree- it's talking about the one degree between boiling water and not boiling water. And the idea that they need to step things up one degree. And so he gave everybody one of these little things, and I would have brought it, except it's fragile and I'm afraid it would break. But you hold it in your hand, it's glass and kind of twisty, and the water bubbles up while you're holding it in your hand. And he gave that to all of his teachers. And so, you know, we had a great time. I think we're off to a good start.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I really enjoyed back-to-school as a board member, getting to visit some schools. And as a parent, it's been fantastic. My kids are having an excellent start to the year. I've got a kindergartner and a second grader, and my kindergartner has been exploding with joy at the end of every single day. And it's just been, really, it's been a fantastic start to the new year. And everybody I've talked to and everybody I've seen has just been in a fantastic mood, and I can't thank staff enough for that. And Rob already mentioned, but thanks, of course, to Allison and to the team at Impact. Really enjoyed spending time at the gala and all of the incredible work they always do for the district.
Done.
Thank you to the speakers for coming tonight, and, excuse me, I keep, my nose is running. But I would like us to think about in the future, I hate to wait till October 8 for our parents to have some kind of a choice in the masking. I know people say it's just, it's a small inconvenience, but if you read on the package of everything we're buying, it's not a protection. In the 2018-19 flu season, 480 kids died from the flu. That is more than have died from COVID in a year and a half. No one suggested kids wear a mask in 2018-19. There are some damages being done. I was at a meeting the other night with hundreds of people that want choice, and asked me to come and just hear them out, and I did. And I understand, because I have issues too with the mask. Postnasal drip doesn't help anything, but there's other issues I have as well. COVID's not going anywhere. It's not going away. In my opinion, it's here to stay. Flu vaccine, every year changes. Sometimes they get it right, sometimes they don't. So that's one of my issues. The other one tonight, I just want to say, Rob, I hope we can open up the room, even if people have to come in one at a time, to open it up to our public and our community, because I have a better time if I can make eye contact with the speakers instead of seeing a black screen and a white name. It's just more personal to see them and be able to hear them in person. It's more convenient for some of them, as they've told me, to sit at home and just zoom in when they have to. But that, so many parents are asking if they can come in in person, and I think that it's time that we revisit that and not shut them out of this room, even if they have to stand in the hallway and a few come in at a time. That would, I think that would help parents to feel that they're really communicating with us rather than a name on a screen. Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you to our speakers, and I always appreciate when our students come and speak, because students like Mina show what we're here, who we serve, and definitely a student who we can all be proud of. Those were great remarks. I also want to thank Allison and the Impact team for a great event. It was terrific. And also, I took my two kids to school and had the opportunity to see the first day for freshmen at Boulder High School. So that was a really fun morning to be a part of my community and just so many kids that my kids grew up with. It was actually pretty special. And a really nice way for my last first day of school as a board member, not counting the minutes. So, and about people coming in in person in some kind of controlled way, I'm sure that's something we can talk about. And so that's all I have. So our next item is our information item, which is the back-to-school update.
Thank you, Board President Marquess. I believe Dr. DeLa Cruz is going to be starting us off. Board members, again, we're going to try to cover a lot of ground over the next 30 minutes and try to give both the board and the public just an update on the things that we've seen, some of the great accomplishments over the past week as we have welcomed students back. And so further ado, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. DeLa Cruz.
Can you hear me now? Good evening, board members. We are so excited to share with you all that's been going on as we led up to preparing for back-to-school and bringing our students back. We can go to the next slide. Of course, you've all spoken about this, just about where we've all shared in your joy and excitement in welcoming our students back to school. Our team was out visiting all of our schools over the last week, and we were delighted to have our board members join us. It was so great to see, as you saw with us, all the students returning, who were welcomed, and how they were celebrated when they got there. We are, as you know, very focused and continue to be focused on our commitment to have students in school and learning five days a week, and are doing everything possible for that to continue and to advance the teaching and learning happening in all of our classrooms five days a week. Of course, we're grounded in our All Together for All Students strategic plan, and we continue to connect and align all of our work with our strategic plan. We are, when we zoom out from the 13 initiatives that are very active within our strategic plan, we look at the long-term outcomes, which are to ignite, equip, and soar, so to make sure that our students benefit, all of our students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities, that we reduce disparities in achievement and opportunity, and that every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for post-graduation success. And what we hope you'll see tonight, as we share with you all of our preparations, and you can see here, just about every action that we've taken as our team has been activated has been aligned in some way to those long-term outcomes on our strategic plan. And you're going to see and hear more about that as we walk through all of the preparations to open this school year. So tonight, we're going to share with you an overview of the many areas that our team has been activated and preparing, and one of those is welcoming our new leaders and educators. We were thrilled to be able to welcome all of our new, new-to-the-district leaders and educators in person this year. So on July 26, our new district leaders joined us for a welcome luncheon, a district orientation, and training from our security team. And this year's new leaders included 12 new school administrators. We'll be introducing them to you on a slide tonight, and six new district leaders. Then we had the honor of welcoming 110 new teachers and special service providers during new educator orientation. And over the course of that five days, our educators had the opportunity to learn more about the instructional framework, to attend role-specific sessions, and to spend time preparing their classrooms. I would say that the highlight of that time was that we had our Student Equity Council, a panel of eight students, who shared their experiences with our new educators. And those experiences were, some of them were painful, some of them were poignant, some of them were really positive, but all of them provided our new educators and all of us who were listening an opportunity to build understanding about how we can continue to better our work and become more culturally responsive to serve each and every one of our students. Certainly, our students' insight and suggestions for what educators can do to ensure that every student is part of a caring community and where they feel celebrated and welcomed provided such an inspiring backdrop to all of the work that our new educators and all of our educators are going to be engaging in. And then, of course, all of our district leadership team participated in the RISE training, and that was, as you probably remember, RISE, the acronym RISE stands for resilience resilience in schools and educators. And so this is an opportunity for educators and our leaders to be able to engage in both self-care, self-awareness, and building those skills so that they can better support our students, and each other, and themselves. That session, those sessions were, that was one of two sessions that all of DLT will participate in, and they were led by University of Colorado Boulder professors in the university's Center for Resilience and Well-being in Schools. This is a framework, RISE is a framework, that helps our individual educators and whole schools to build capacity for that culturally responsive and culturally relevant and trauma-responsive approach for our students. We kicked off BVSD's district-led professional learning with a welcome from Dr. Anderson, an inspiring welcome. I was so happy to be able to join in that welcome, and as Patty Delgado also joined. And that was a live stream to all of our teachers and staff who were in their schools with their teams. And the remainder of that afternoon on August 11 was time for our educators to dig into our instructional model at the secondary level and also to dig into the scope and sequence at the elementary level, as well as to become more acquainted with our curriculum management system atlas and the units that are housed in there. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew Moore, who's going to share a bit more about our preparations for technology and supporting our students and families and staff.
Oh, not Andrew Moore.
There's a lot of slides in here. So just a quick update on the Enrollment Help Center. We were able to return to an in-person activity over five days this year, right before school started. We did have more than 500 families come and join us. We have been seeing a trend downwards in the number of people that we've been able to support over the years that we've been doing this. We do think it's because we're able to get the word out, and people are feeling more supported and able to access some of the online options that are available out there. Next slide. Enrollment. So these slides are a little hard to see. Just suffice it to say that we track where enrollment is coming in. We start in the beginning of August and run this all the way through October count. Where we're starting right now, so the black line that is headed decidedly downhill in those three pictures is last year. The first two graphs are, at the very bottom is where we're headed this year, so we're trending back up. So we are seeing some return of the enrollment that we lost last year. However, it's projected to not quite hit our projection that we had for the budget, but it's still fairly early. We're seeing students and families make choices into Boulder Universal and BU Link. So we're still fairly early in the process, and we'll continue to keep tracking this over time. But suffice it to say that we do, we have been running these graphs for over a decade, and so we see a pretty solid trend in what's happening here. Next is Mike.
Good evening, board members. So what we have for you in this slide is somewhat, could be deceiving, but I think we do the best we can. If you look at the far left, these are candidates of color that we put in the hiring folders. And let me explain that a little bit. The hiring folder is a folder where, once we post a job and we post the requirements and the preferred, we put all the required that meet the minimum standards for that job in a folder. It goes to the principals and hiring managers and to decide who they want to interview. Well, there's not a year up there, which is in 2018. We had only about 64% of candidates of color in a folder. And we're talking teachers, we're talking licensed employees. You can see that number in the last three years has jumped into the 90s, and that's because of the efforts, as I think I brought to you guys back a couple years ago on all the strategies that we put forth. Now, one of the things that happened, though, is that in the COVID time, it limited us from doing that. We had about 17 virtual fairs that we attended. They were in the evenings, on Saturdays, things of that sort, and not a lot of people from all over the country did not come to those virtual fairs. We went to national virtual fairs and didn't have good success in terms of finding people. However, we had our own. And with our own, our own virtual fair, that's where we found most of our people this year in terms of who we hired. The next slide is really the interviews, the postings that interviewed the people of color, and that number continues to climb a little bit. So I think the urgency around the district, and it's great, thanks to our strategic plan and our superintendent, about this being an urgent thing of finding people of color within our classrooms is starting to take a hold. So you'll see those numbers jump. Now, that third, the third graph is three years of data, but I want to clarify that even the percentages may seem low. I want to give you some numbers, kind of give you comparison, too. In 2019, we hired 100 new teachers to Boulder Valley, 20 of them- 20 of them were people of color, which made that a 20% gain there. In 2020, we only hired 59 teachers. That was a COVID time. And of that 59, 14 were teachers of color, reflecting a 23%. Then in 2021, just this last spring, and now, we had 110 new teachers, 29 were people of color, giving us a 26.6% increase. But here's, here was, I'd say, the good news. We continue to make strides, but we didn't lose ground. And that's the important thing, because in the last three years, we've added 63 people of color in this district. And so I think that's a celebration, but it still needs to be more, and we're going to continue to do that. Now, this is a high-level, 30-foot-thousand view of what we're doing, of how we, these are the results, but we could dig into the specifics of how we're doing this, because now that we're on the other side of this COVID, it might create some new opportunities for us. So we look forward to doing that. And I'm going to turn it over to Robyn.
Good evening. I am excited and proud to share the names and roles with you of some new network leaders that we have. Some of these people are new to BVSD, others are not new to BVSD but have assumed new roles this year. So beginning in the Southwest Network, I'm going to start with Jennifer Garfield, who is our Director of Teaching and Learning, followed by Jennifer Corb, our principal at Superior Elementary School, Mayor V. C. Fuentes, our principal at University Hill Elementary School, and Chris Bastin, our principal at High Peaks Elementary School. Next, in the Northwest Network, Harvey Wajaka, our Executive Director, Kifany Leichak, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mark Sibley, our interim principal at Netherland Middle Senior. And last but not least, in our EAS Network, Gianni Thompson, the Executive Director, Heather Hanson, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and finally, our principal at Escuela de Lengua Pioneer, Annabelle Raffo. A special thank you and welcome to these leaders. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nativity Miller.
Good evening. I also have the pleasure of introducing three new district leaders who will be, who will support both the district and schools district-wide. So we have Michelle Brenner is our new Executive Director for Special Education, Harry Waterman is our Director of Athletics and Activities, and we have Shannon Gamble, who is our new Director of MTS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Andrew for Technology.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right, I've just got a couple of slides for you tonight. The first one is on our Chromebook deployments. A big change in our story from this year to last year, you may remember, in the middle of the pandemic, we ran into supply chain issues, and we were struggling with just getting enough Chromebooks where we needed them. We got ahead of that, we ordered Chromebooks long ago this year, and with that, two things happened. We were able to deploy to our fifth graders in the One2Web program for the first time. That completes the Board of Education approval for One2Web from fifth through 12th grade that was actually done a few years ago. We've also deployed over 11,000 Chromebooks, new student devices, primarily through the One2Web program. Just a huge turnover in devices and getting these newer tools out there, I think will help immensely for the students for sure, but also for the support with having that many new devices. And then, a couple pandemic changes that we've decided to keep inside of IT. The first one is that our service desk is now directly taking calls from parents and students. You may recall, prior to the pandemic, everything came through a teacher or an employee, and we found that, you know, if we could solve the problems real-time with parents or even students, we'll do that. Students can even put in a service desk ticket directly, and so that helps all of us track the issues and ensure they get resolved in a timely fashion. The second item is IT Prime, which was really the linchpin of ensuring students during the pandemic had devices. We've whittled that way down, since we don't need to have that level of service, but there are areas where actually bringing a device or a hotspot out to the students is important. BU Link, potential quarantine situations come to mind, and then we'll also use that service for any other specialty circumstances, maybe special ed students as well. And then, last, with kind of the bigger picture, Class Link, which all of you are using, was implemented. Huge security changes in that, and also huge usability changes, plus the ability to do other things in the future. I believe I'll be in front of you at an executive session to talk some of our security changes coming up. I'll get into more details then about that. All right, next slide. So the Connect Me program, also a big item that was important to get all kids connected. We're continuing on with that. So LiveWire is the ability to give free internet to students. We currently have that deployed and up and running at 15 schools. By the end of this calendar year, we'll be at 30. There's about five or six schools, though, that are really close right now. They've got the physical hardware, we're just getting the electricity hooked up now, so you're going to see a bump in that by the end of September. And then, the end of the program, we'll have 45 schools. Keep in mind, we don't need a tower on every school. Think of Monarch High School and Monarch K8. They're right next to each other, so there's no need to deploy on both. We have a number of those situations. 1,300 hotspots were made available to the schools, and they've been deploying them as they need. And then last, over the summer, we were able to install at 31 schools outdoor learning spaces with Wi-Fi. So that's all up and running. Okay, that's it for me, and I'll turn it over to Rob Price.
Thank you. Good evening. Another busy summer in operations for us. That has become the story for the last five or six years, associated with the bond and everything else. Our Heroes in Food Service has done a fantastic job transitioning from the food distribution program to providing free meals for all of our students this year, thanks to the USDA. Through the first four days of schools, meals have increased 54% compared to the 2019 to 2020 school year. So, a big thanks to USDA there. We are still encouraging families to apply for, or to fill out the Free and Reduced Lunch forms. A lot of advantages, you can see there, waived fees for families through athletics programs, college applications, et cetera. And also, our schools are dependent on those Free and Reduced Lunch applications. If families are watching tonight and you have questions, feel free to reach out to your schools or to food services, and they can help you through that process. We are also providing salad bars and bulk milk this year, thanks to local health department's recommendations. And then we'll continue to follow safety measures as recommended by CDC and Boulder County Public Health. It's not on that slide, I do want to say, we are hiring in food service, just like transportation, we have shortages. If you're interested, we need your help. We are serving more and more students every day, so let's continue to provide those free meals for all. Just again, a special thanks to our routing team, our dispatchers, all of our drivers that have hung in there with us, our Safe Routes of Schools team, and especially our parents. This has been the biggest challenge that I've faced in this district, is this bus driver shortage. Our team has been exceptional, they have reached out, they're providing that hand-to-hand service as parents let us know what their situation is. So, as you know, and as we communicated at the last board meeting, we are providing transportation for all those that are transportation-eligible and registered for bus service. As we hear families that are, that did not register but are eligible, we are reaching out to them and supporting them. We have heard from certain schools, that has been an issue, so we are making sure the registration process is not a barrier. Our Safe Routes of Schools team is out there on a daily basis, providing crossing guard supports. A lot of our Ed Center staff has volunteered to be out there, providing crossing guards until we can get all those positions hired. We have been a list staff all of those. So, again, a plug that we are still looking for bus drivers. As of today, we are still 71 drivers short of where we were in 2019. So, in order to bring drivers or to bring routes back, we will have to hire more and more. I just, again, want to say thanks to our Bond team. We completed 12 projects this summer. We were thrilled to bring students back to Halcyon. That school, as you know, we rebuilt that entirely and then remodeled a small portion of the building. We are going to have an open house here coming up. Hope to see everyone there. Justice High opened their doors up to students. You can see the photo in the top left-hand corner is a picture of the Commons out of Justice High School. University Hill is opened, the first time we have had air conditioning in that building, and I can tell you how great it feels. So Mayor V., the principal out there, is doing a tremendous job. That one came in, what I would say, hot. We were coming in right against the gun there, just like we have done in the past, but we got school open, and it was great to see kids back in the building. Rec Field House is wrapping up. In the next two weeks, we will have a ribbon cutting out there coming up in September. For the first time, we have all of our non-mountain schools air-conditioned, and I'm going to put one exception there. So, we air-condition seven schools. We are running into some hurdles at NuVista. That was a contract that we signed in July. We have put temporary units out there. Again, just thanks to the patience of the NuVista staff, they have dealt with us for a long time, so we are working on that still. The NuVista design, that is a contract that you signed. We have hired MOA Architecture. We've had our first kickoff meeting out there. Just as a reminder, we have funds to start design, but we do not have funds to construct it. So we, over the next 12 months, we'll be working on design, while we're doing facility assessments, et cetera, we will bring an update back to the board at a later time. And I'm not going to go through these, but as you heard Dr. Anderson say, we are committed to five days a week, and right now, based on the information, we know these are the health protocols that we're going to be following for the near future unless something changes. So ventilation is still our primary layer, along with mask, hand washing, and making sure that students don't come to school sick. And I should say, staff and students don't come to school sick. So with that, I will turn it over to our Chief Communications Officer, Randy Barber.
Good evening, board members. Just to pick up where Rob left off, obviously, we have some protocols in place, and we've been trying to make sure that everyone's aware of those. We know that, as with everything else in this pandemic, we've had to be nimble, we've had to be ready for adjustments, and we know that that will likely be the case in the future. So as we've had the new information, we've moved quickly. I want to make sure to give a shout-out to our print shop inside the district. We have a group of people that helped to print materials, and one of the things that they do is help us with the signage that goes out to our schools. So when the decision was made only a week before school, they had to help us move quickly, along with our graphic artist, Jade Cody, who does an amazing job in that work. Obviously, communication will be key as we continue to move forward and continue to make sure that folks are aware and able to act, you know, as we, as we change forward. Another big development that I want to mention from the communications aspect is about interpretation and translation. I'm very excited that we've gone from a format that's like this for translation or for interpretation, my apologies, where every school would have to call a translator and set up their own situation, to something that's a little bit more like this, in which we have a coordinated, district-wide, centralized interpretation protocol. And so all of our schools are able to use this, we're able to make sure that they get the right qualified professional person out there to do that. And I'm excited to announce that we're in the process of hiring someone to do the same kind of work on translation. And so, we hope in the next few months that we'll really have a great update for you all in regards to how this is working. Very, very excited about this. And without further to do, I'm going to hand it off to our legal counsel, Kathleen Sullivan, to provide us an update on board policy.
So, board members, as you always do, you are leading the way on the equity work in this district, so highlighting three policy items that are in effect for the full school year this year. Starting at the bottom of the slide, the board will remember that last school year, mid-year, the board revised our athletics policy. It is now an athletics and activities code that applies to all of our students. One of the major changes the board will remember on this policy was making sure that any significant student misconduct is referred back to the school administration to be addressed consistent with this board's student conduct policies. We also have two other new policies that are in effect for the first time this year. The first is student involvement with drugs and alcohol. The District Accountability Committee really, really worked hard on this policy, and the board adopted it in June. It significantly increases the restorative practices that are used with students who use or possess drugs or alcohol. It eliminates the mandatory referral to law enforcement requirement, and it gives our building leadership the discretion that they need to keep students safe. The other policy that is new this year is the dress code policy. And again, a big shout-out to DAC for their work on this. We now have a district-wide dress code that is consistent with best practice across the country in holding students accountable for their own conduct and creating equitable conditions that serve all of our students. And now, I think it is back to Dr. DeLa Cruz.
So, in closing, as you can see, the team has been really hard at work, getting ready, and continuing to have students in school, focused on being all together for all students. And we stand by for any questions or conversation that the board would like to have.
Okay, thank you so much, and a special warm welcome to all of our new employees. Welcome to BVSD, and we hope you love working here. Questions or comments, board members? Kitty?
I have a couple of questions. The hotspots that were for the schools, that's for them to give to students who need it? Is that correct?
Yes, great question, Kitty. We deploy, we IT during the pandemic, deployed numerous hotspots specifically to students. Now that we're back in school, we've taken the ones that we haven't deployed, they're at the schools, so that they can more quickly identify the students and just send them home with them.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my other question is about interpretation. How many languages do we have available? And what are they?
We will get you a list of all them. I know that I believe that it's 50-plus.
Okay, you don't need to list them right now.
No, and we've got, obviously, very strong emphasis in Spanish, and a few others that are used a lot in our schools. I think that's a handful. And then in addition to that, we have a service that we're able to pull in that's phone-based that allows us a much greater capacity for all languages.
Great, thank you.
Kathy, do you have any questions? Okay.
No, thank you.
Okay, Lisa?
Kathleen, sometimes when you roll out new policies, there can be some bumps in the road. If a student has concerns about whether their school is fully understanding the parameters of the new policies around dress codes or around the restorative justice element, what would be the best thing for them to do?
That is an excellent question, and rather than have them all call me, I might look to our academic leadership and see if they would suggest. I will say, I think, like Mina, our first student speaker today, really, I think, raising those concerns to administration and finding a civil way to say, hey, you know, the district updated the dress code, and is this our current policy? And really advocating for themselves, I think, would be one way. We certainly did make sure that we spoke with all of our district leaders at the opening of the school year and highlighted these same policies so that we could make sure the awareness is really out there. But I'd certainly be interested to hear any hotspots that we may hear about.
And Kathleen, I am happy to answer that question about if there are students or parents or staff for that matter who are wondering about that. They can feel free to reach out to the Executive Director in that school's network, or they can feel free to reach out to me, and we will be happy to have the conversation with them and then to verify with the principal that everyone is on the same page.
Thank you so much. And just one more question. As a parent, I know I'm one of many parents who's elated to have another year of free school food across the district, and I wonder if we're going to have an opportunity to discuss as a board this year what we can do in terms of advocacy to discuss with our elected officials what it would take to keep this going indefinitely.
I'd imagine that would be a great topic as we think about legislative priorities. Now, that might not be a legislative party at the state, it could be a federal legislative priority, and certainly that's something that we can entertain and try to think about what it is we could do.
And I'll count on you for remembering that, but I am already scheduling our meeting with Congressman Nogus. I started that process today, but I will not be at that meeting.
Thank you so much, Dana.
Okay. And just a reminder, the person who would be happy to field your questions is Robyn Fernandez, just as, so you all know, it's R-O-B-B-Y-N, just in case you're searching. Richard, any?
No, I just want to thank the staff for all the updates and for the quick work. No, I just want to thank the staff for all the updates and for the quick work, particularly to the communications department, because, man, I mean, that translation interpretation thing has been like a real non-issue for a long time, and it seemed like you're getting it fixed quickly. So, thank you very much for that. I just have a quick, a couple of quick questions. One is for Mike in terms of the hires. You mentioned people of color, but there's, it's not disaggregated in terms of what people of color. And also, are they linguistically also, do you have linguistically abilities in there too as well?
No, Board Member Garcia, I do not, but I can get that, get that information to you.
That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because one of the issues is hiring bilingual people.
Yes, yes. And I know that we've hired several of them. In particular, Columbine hired five. Sanchez hired a couple, I believe. Pioneer hired a couple as well. And UniHill had some transfers that were bilingual that moved. They just needed to be into a different school, so we'll get that information.
Thank you very much. And on the tech side, on the IT side, I was asked by a couple of parents if, if there's going to be continuation, and I don't know whether this is true or not, did the district help pay for some of the internet connections for some families? And if that's going to continue?
Yes, great question. We do pay, so we provide, well, first, we try to assess the situation. If we can get live wire out to the homes, that's free, there's no cost. In the situation where we have qualifying students, free and reduced lunch qualifying, we will also pay for Internet Essentials, which is the 995 offering from Comcast. At this point, there's no plans to turn off the funding of that for qualifying students. I imagine as we continue downtime and the pandemic changes, there'll probably be a discussion on what we needed to go for. Now, having said that, as live wire expands, we should be able to get most students connected through that technology.
Yeah. Well, I know that it was necessary when we were all remote learning, you know, in terms of that. And I know many of the families that had to upgrade because the 995 was not covering, didn't give them enough juice, I guess, if you will, in terms of four or five kids being on the internet at the same time, so, yeah.
Yes, that is true. And what we're, I actually wrote a blog on this last year about adequate internet. And we have been providing additional hotspots, so there are some families that have Internet Essentials and a hotspot. And then, we will also pay to upgrade live wire if its service is not enough for a family of four or five. It's only $5 a month for us to upgrade the service to support a family of four or five students.
And another thing, Andrew, you know, we often talk about the digital divide, and I know that through the, because of the pandemic and because of remote learning, we saw that magnify quite a bit. Do you think we'll ever get a report back in terms of, is that divide closing, or how close are we to, you know, making sure that everybody in our district has internet capability?
Yeah, it varies district by district, community by community within districts. We're tracking it as closely as we can. For example, we know in the mountains, there are a few families that we just cannot get internet to simply because the infrastructure isn't there. Hotspots don't work, for example, the mountainous terrain. However, some of the new satellite technologies are coming, and that may be a solution even for those families. We could probably go into a lot more detail at another meeting, but we do track this as best as we can. And if we hear of students that either don't have a device or they don't have internet, my team will help in getting them either of those things that they need.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I did meet some of the new staff, or the new principals, especially the bilingual principals and the bicultural principals. And I'm very impressed with the people that have been hired. I did have a conversation with the principal at University Hill and also at Pioneer, and it's impressive in terms of their vast knowledge of everything. And I'm looking forward to meeting, I think it's Dr. Wahaka, and only because I have a special place for Wahaka in my heart here, because I have family that lives in Wahaka. I don't know, I just need to figure out, Dr. Wahaka, that's a cool name. Okay, thank you.
Donna?
Thank you. No.
Okay. Okay, Kitty?
So, following up on Lisa's question about dress code, are, is the new dress code in the student handbooks? Like, do they know what the new dress code is?
When you say student handbooks...
Okay, is it, is it given out to students in any form?
Yeah, I'll let Kathleen answer that. Like, you know, as she shared, we've certainly communicated it with principals, to the extent that schools have communicated that with schools. Maybe Kathleen can provide some, sure shed some light on that?
Yes, I sure can. So, we have made sure that our website and the information that's linked from the school sites goes to our current policies, and we do think that most of our public goes to the website to make sure they're seeing the most updated policy. In terms of student handbooks, the ones, anything that was printed this year, I did not make that deadline. We did meet with our principals over the summer, and I really do understand the timeline now for preparing student handbooks so that we can make sure that we are on top of that for the coming school year.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the students actually know what the new dress code is.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, Rob?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank our team. I can't tell you, Board members, how proud I am of the work that our entire team has done over the course of not just this pandemic, but preparing for this school year. And as we think about the presentation that you saw today, everywhere you look, you're seeing impacts and changes that are being driven by our strategy, all together for all students. We're being very intentional, we're being incredibly inclusive, and we're as focused as I think this district has ever been in making sure that we provide each and every kid what they need to be successful. This is the best school district in Colorado. I'm so proud of our team. I'm just so proud of all of the work that we're doing. And I'm proud of this governance team as well. The policies and leadership that you provide this school district over the course of the past year, two years, three years since I've been here, truly remarkable, so I want to thank you and recognize you as well.
Well, thank you. All right. Well, with no other questions, is everyone okay to move on to action items, or do you need a break? Yeah? Okay, great. So, here are our action items. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, August 10th, 2021 Regular Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, August 17th, 2021 Special Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Crestview Elementary, 7.5 Approval of a Contract Amendment for COVID-19 Testers and a COVID Nurse, 7.6 FY22 School A G Power School Renewal. And then, lastly, 7.7 License Agreement with East Boulder Ditch Company for Cimbero Marsh. Are there any items Board members would like to pull? Okay, seeing none. Could I have a motion before we discuss to approve these items?
So move.
Okay. Kitty and Richard? All right. Any questions about the items? No? All right, hearing none. Laura, would you please call the role in the consent grouping?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yeah.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I forgot the legislative update. All right. Do we have a legislative update, Kathy? Rob?
I don't believe that I have any.
The interim committee on school finance met today, Tina, but it can certainly wait till the next board meeting.
Okay, great. All right. So then, going on to our next item, it is the appointment of the voting delegate to CASB's Delegate Assembly. So, every year, all the districts, or some of the districts, most of the districts send a delegate to a place to convene and talk about what the priorities are for the Colorado Association of School Board Members legislative priorities are. They're lobbying efforts. They do lobby on behalf of the districts that are members. We, of course, pay for our own lobbyists to represent our interests uniquely as well. So, who would like to be the delegate to the CASB Delegate Assembly?
President Marquess?
Yes.
I think I have clerical error on that script that I typed up. We covered that last week.
We did?
Two weeks ago. Yes.
Darn it.
I'm sorry.
Wow. Anyway, I will do whatever you tell me to do, Laura. Okay. Okay, so Kitty's still going to go. That's great. I thought we had already done that. All right, so moving on to policy items, everyone okay to keep going on? All right, great. Okay, the permanent adoption of board policy, DID, property accounting. Kathleen? Well, actually, first, we need, can we have a motion to approve this by Lisa, second by Kitty? Okay. Do you want to talk about it again, Kathleen?
This is an item that the board addressed at the end of last school year in order to facilitate our transition to the new ERP system. The real focus was on increasing the dollar value of the items that will be individually inventoried so that we can be as careful as we need to be while still being efficient. So, it is back before the board with no additional changes, ready for permanent adoption.
Any questions? Kitty?
Yeah, I guess I must not have noticed this when we looked at it before, but on the, on the last page, number eight, purchases of goods and services to be paid for by parents or students, could we be more inclusive with the parent language, put parents and guardians?
I think you may be one step ahead of us, Board Member Sergeant.
Sorry.
I believe you're commenting on DJ, and we're just talking about DID right now.
Oh, you're right.
But we'll get there.
Kitty, any further comments or questions?
Nope.
All right. Laura, would you mind calling the role to adopt this policy, DID, and the revisions?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is a study item for the revisions to board policy, DJDJE, which is purchasing and contracting. We don't need a motion, we're just studying this. Kathleen, do you want to give us an overview?
Sure. I will let Bill Sutter go into specifics, but this is a necessary revision to policy to align with federal law and to adjust some of the language so we can be clear about purchasing and contract authority in the district. Bill?
So, we reviewed this extensively with the Audit Committee back in the spring. What this does is it does bring us in alignment with the federal purchasing guidelines, particularly with grants, so that the policy is set at the level that the federal law is set at. Currently, our threshold for grant purchases is decidedly lower than the federal level, so this brings it into alignment. It does clarify some of the requirements and special circumstances around purchasing, so things like curriculum, that we have a whole separate process and policy guidance around that. And then, also, it does raise the amounts that are approved by the superintendent or designee and what comes to the board, again, with the hopes of streamlining some of the processes, being able to roll this into the ERP upgrade so that we have more efficient processing, the ability to report out on what is transacted easier, and just make the whole system more efficient. Certainly, if there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Yeah, okay. Kitty, do you want to start?
Yes.
And then, I'll go.
So, under number two, contracts, what's the definition of small dollar amounts?
Under $10,000.
Okay, thank you.
Is what's proposed.
And on sale of goods and services by district employees, I'm hoping I'm right on saying if, if, you know, a company is going to sell something to us and it's a publicly traded company, you don't have to see who's a stockholder in that company?
Correct.
Okay. Because that would be pretty nitpicky.
This is, that particular section is in alignment with current state statute. So, state statute says, goods provided by employees must be approved by the board. And for a long time, we've included services as well because we've had presentations and music events put on and murals painted and construction, things like that. And so, we're just always making sure that we're kind of treating everybody the same when it comes to getting approval, either by board under state law or by the superintendent, just to make sure that there's some knowledge of what's going on.
Okay. And then, the thing I brought up that was on the wrong one, Kathleen's nodding, so I'm good.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. On the first page, under two contracts, the second paragraph, it increases the purchasing up to $250,000 for goods, services, or other activities. What would be examples of other activities?
Something that's not a good or a service.
So, could that include, and this is where I'm wondering, so for instance, the BVSD has sometimes given money to Great Education, which is a nonprofit, which then goes into a campaign. Would that fall under that, or is that considered a service with a competitive bidding behind it?
That, so, an advocacy group that provides information to school districts in general, like Great Ed, they're very clear that any funds that come from school districts do not go into anything campaign-related, so that there's a very bright line between that. I would say that something like that would fall under a service because they're providing that advocacy service for school districts. Same thing with the Colorado School Finance Project, as we participate on a per pupil basis with the school finance project.
Okay. And what about donations to nonprofits? Would that fall under other activities that are, that do something in the community that's supported but is not a service that we went through a competitive bidding process with?
What's your interpretation, counsel?
So, I would like to look at that more carefully, but donations in terms of purchasing or contracting, my initial interpretation is that that would not be governed by this particular policy.
Okay. It might help to tighten up the word "other activity" because it seems like any activity that falls loosely under the mission of the district, which is doing good things by kids, could get pretty broad. The other piece is going from $50,000 to $250,000 is a pretty significant leap. Where would I go as a board member if I was interested in all the things that we had purchased that were under $250,000? Where would I see that online?
So, it's not reported online. Certainly, there's the ability to provide information and reports to the board at any point in time. You know, it's, it's an open record, certainly. Purchase orders, all of these things would be flowing through purchase orders. That's the intent of aligning it with the implementation of the ERP system, so it is all electronically flowing through the purchase order system.
Okay.
So, it would just be a report.
And at this point, those all come to the board for approval.
Hundreds, currently, 100 and above comes to the board. Yeah.
Right. Okay, and then, the other piece is there's an exception for the competitive bidding process and the, which I need to find that right now. Okay, so, under the special circumstances, is there a cap to the contract size for not using the competitive bidding process? Is it just up until $250,000 the same?
So, let's see. So, let's see. Was it a particular item or just in general across all of those?
Across all of them, with, I mean, with the notable exception of textbooks and yearbooks and things like that. I just wonder, I mean, I think that part of what would, I would wonder whether we might want to report out on when we didn't use a competitive bidding process if it were in excess of 50,000 or something like that, on those rare occasions. And I really like that we have a competitive bidding process. I think it's really important. And so, I get nervous about, and I really think the best of everyone, and I don't think it's an intention, but just somehow finding a way to flag it if something wasn't, that they did not go through the competitive bidding process.
So, the competitive bidding process is now, would be 250 and above, so certainly, so essentially what this is saying is anything that is competitively bid, which is an RFP process, which is, you know, several months in duration. If there were an exception to that, that is something, it would still come to the board.
Well, no, I think in the second line, it says, "Small purchases 10,000 to 250 will have a competitive quotation in that little table."
Oh, right. So, if there is a, is something that is not, does not have two quotes on that. So, that's not really a competitive process.
Okay.
And if somebody is bringing that forward and saying, you know, "Here's the item that I need to have," it has to be documented, shall be documented for items above 10,000 in value and submitted to the Director of Purchasing. So, there is a documentation process that goes along with that that says, you know, why is this item, why you can't find another one to get a second quote.
So, do the special circumstances apply to purchases below 250,000? Or is number four only applicable to items that are in 250 above?
It would be for anything.
Any, okay.
Yeah, 10,000 and above.
Okay, I need to think about, I just, it is hard to go from 50 to 250. That is like a really big jump. Just, I don't know if there's a way to flag when there are large purchases made without a competitive bidding process, if that's a possibility. I don't want it to be, I know the idea is to make things less cumbersome, so I'm sensitive to that.
So, when this is implemented in the new ERP system, January 1, those kinds of things will be a lot easier to report out because they'll be included in the system that this purchase order, you know, is, has the checkbox or the flag or whatever, that it was, it fell under those circumstances. So, that's, makes it much easier to report out on.
Okay. And I just, and I'll point out also that there seemed to be some overlap between four and five, because I think, for instance, in the, in 4A, there's only one responsible source for an item, seems to be similar to what is described as a sole-source procurement. So, whether we need to have both of those in there following each other, I'm not sure. We might want to think about clarifying that. And then, the last thing is, the sale of goods and services by district employees, and particularly services, there's, so this is, I think this addresses that a teacher outside of school hours could not provide tutoring to a student who's enrolled in the Boulder Valley School District. Am I reading that correct?
I believe that is, falls under a different policy. This is more outside of their normal job duties. So, a teacher that has a construction business and wants to build something for the school, I've seen, you know, furniture or built-in cabinets, things like that, painting murals, giving presentations in another, another school, something that is outside of their normal job duties kind of thing.
Okay, so, I think we might want to clarify that because of, like, for instance, if a teacher teaches math, but they also teach executive function skills on the side, is that different? And part of it is because of the, oh, it's not legislation, it's a proposed tax that will be used to provide services for children on a state-based level. And I just want to be really sensitive about where we put language that restricts teachers from providing tutoring and other services to students, because it might be that there's funding out there to do that. And I think we want to be careful to tightly describe so that if we have to go back and change it, we can figure out how to do it. Does that make any sense whatsoever?
Yes, yes, I think it does. Bill is right, we do have policy GCQAB about tutoring for pay that hasn't been revised or reviewed since 1978.
Oh, you must have done a good job there.
So, I think we might have a really good opportunity here to bring it into this century.
Okay. So, because, yes, because this would read to me like tutoring.
And we could add language that says that that's addressed elsewhere, so we, I'll work on that alignment between now and the next meeting when we bring this back.
Okay. And I think that's all I have. Rob?
And I will say, Board Members, you know, the reason this is coming up to you now is because we needed to review this so we can properly program the ERP system. And please know and understand, this is your policy, that oversight of budget and procurement and expenditures is certainly a responsibility that falls to this board. And to the extent that the limits here, while they may be aligned to federal guidelines or to best practices, if there are limits that you feel like need to be different for the needs of this community and needs of this board, then, you know, we'll work with you to make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
So, Tina, I have a couple of questions. Tina?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Rob, thanks for saying that. I share Tina's concern and some others about the jump from 50 to 250. And I also am hoping that when we bring this back, we could bring it back for study before we bring it back for action. What I'd like to know is where we are not in compliance with the federal. That's probably more urgent to me than just bringing this into alignment with what is seen as best practices. So, is there a way to tell what we need to do to be in compliance with the federal law and what is just best practices?
The federal guidelines are higher than what we have. So, what we have to follow by our purchasing policy and the grant guidelines, the regulation that goes with it, is a lower standard, or depending on how you look at it, a higher standard. It's a much lower dollar amount, so you can always choose to say, you know, on a ridiculous level, every purchase that's made comes to the board. Not suggesting that, but that's, that's a level that would be below what the federal level is. And so, there's no concern that as long as you're doing something that's not above that, above the federal level, then you're perfectly compliant with what the federal level is. So, you can always make it a tighter amount or lower amount than what the federal level is. If that helps.
Kathy, do you have other questions?
A little bit. I, no, I would just hope that we, given the questions that we've had, that we could bring it back at least one more time for study before we bring it back for action.
What's the sense of urgency to get this changed for your ERP?
We're currently building the system, and it needs to go through user acceptance testing and then training, so it's fairly urgent. This did come to the Audit Committee, again, back in the spring with the other policy that went through. There's, we've done a lot of research when we have information on what peer districts' levels are, you know, up to a million dollars that goes to the board. In some instances, Academy 20, Denver Public Schools, 500,000, Douglas County Jeffco, 250 in Pooter, 250 in Cherry Creek, Policy Governance in Adams 12, where if it's approved in the budget, it doesn't come to the board at all. And so, this is, this would bring us more even below some of our peer districts, but certainly into alignment with large school districts of our magnitude.
Okay, well, that might make sense then.
And we can provide that level of information.
Does it, does it make sense if Bill provides that information to the board and then we bring this back for study and then action, based on the changes that we've heard you all kind of share? And I think Kathleen's got some work to do, Bill having some information to share. And then we'll bring it back for study and make sure everybody's comfortable before we move forward.
That sounds great.
I also, I also had the same concerns that you and Kathy had in terms of the jump from 50 to 250. And, you know, my, my question in my head was, "Why?" But I think you've answered that. And the other question that I had is, when was the $50,000 threshold established before? And do you know the reason for that? You don't have to answer that right now. And then I had a question in terms of you trying to help me get clear in terms of what this means in terms, but, but do not require formal board approval if the provisions of this policy have been complied with and funds have been budgeted. I think I understand that now. So, that could be kind of like a safeguard too, but on the other hand, if it's not on the budget, the superintendent could go ahead and sign off on a contract that's 250,000 with that coming to the board, correct?
Yes, I might suggest that would not be a great course of action, and I would advise the superintendent as such. And certainly, there's the ability to move dollars around within the budget under other policies in the, in the district. But, you know, if, if we're very careful as it is, if something is not included into the budget, there's been items that have come to the board at that $100,000 and above level in the past that were not included in the budget, and there's a little checkbox and it says "not budgeted." And so, that has happened in the past because we have to get approval for it, and it's something that the district has to do to move forward. I can't think of a specific example, but I know that has happened in the past.
Okay.
And the $50,000 has been, I want to say, since I started here, 20 or 25 years ago, it's been at that level for a very long time.
Because I, 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 at one time, where, a few years back, that wouldn't, Rob was here a few years ago, where I believe there was a contract that was for $100,000, and the way to get around it coming to the board was that they split it in half, 50/50. So, I'm sure that's not going to happen, but I think I recall that.
If a purchase is able to legitimately be split so that it can be done in phases and you are not committed to the second phase of something, that is a possibility and has happened in the past. Just to, you can't just split a contract and say, "We're going to pay half of it now and half of it later, and therefore, it's not at that threshold." So, that's, these approvals that are going to get built into the ERP system are going to prevent some of that. And we've, the contract cleanup that, this is a whole separate issue with approval of contracts that's been going on with Kathleen and the procurement office. On any dollar amount of a contract that is committing the district to something, we're tightening up that policy or that process, I should say, significantly. So, I don't know if you want to comment on that at all, Kathleen?
I would say there was language in the policy, but we further enhanced it to address that issue, Board Member Garcia, just to be very clear. So, just at the bottom of Section 3, right above the Special Circumstances section, it's always provided that procurement should not be divided for the purpose of circumventing this policy. And we added that language to make clear that that concept applies to all of our actions, so solicitations, contracts, awards, any sort of procurement.
Thank you.
I just have a quick, I know in years gone by, there, maybe within the last six years, and before my time on the board, but there were some issues that came up in board meetings about donations that, you know, it's hard on that budget book, it's the stick to, to actually see the things that go through. So, I'm concerned about the 50, going from 50 to 250, because it takes some digging to find where things are grouped together. That's all.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll look forward to seeing this policy again, and thank you for all your work on it. All right, our last item is agenda setting. I'm committed to start scheduling meetings with our legislative delegates so that we can meet with them. And I will try to be conscientious about everyone's schedules, so just let me, you know, maybe I'll try to throw out some times and then we'll figure that out. The other thing that I think is being scheduled is we're trying to get board members the opportunity to sit in on a race relations class at Boulder High School, so I think Dr. De La Cruz is going to be helping with that. So, I'm hoping, oh, yeah, no, maybe not.
Well, I think that what we would want to do is if that's an opportunity that the board members are interested in, we would look at all of our high schools to see what courses are being offered and then provide a variety of opportunities, with Boulder High not being the only school that I believe is offering a course like that. And so, but I would want to open that up to all schools and kind of dig in and see where those things are happening so you can see the variety and different options that we have at our high schools.
I apologize, I sometimes am narrow in my high schools. Okay, so, anything else? Those are just two things I wanted to mention.
Just, just very quickly, Tina, I, I know that we've been, at least a couple of times, we've mentioned the Pledge of Allegiance, and I believe I've been hearing that, "Well, there's really nothing we can do because it's state law." And I'm going to do an RFI, and I'm going to send it to Kathleen, because I want to find out where that state law is at. Okay, I, I looked at the law book today, and I didn't see it, so I just need clarification on that.
Thanks for submitting an RFI. All right. Anything else? Any other thoughts? Kitty?
I know we had talked about addressing KH, and I don't remember saying anything more than we were just going to look at it. And have we decided a time?
Is this the distribution of funds from individual schools?
Yes.
I think in the prioritization meeting, we talked about how that was part of the differentiated funding piece. Did this not come up last week?
We talked about the differential funding, but I don't remember talking about KH, because I know I brought up in the past that the percentage seems low. You know, when you look at Crestview can raise $24,000, or, you know, some of these schools raise $40,000. And, and so, then $4,000 gets distributed to a number of schools.
Right.
And it, I mean, I'm sure it helps, but it's not much of an impact.
Yes, and so, DAC, just some history, so DAC looked into it six or seven years ago and did a report on KH and the effect, and I, and I think it is on our prioritization list, and I think we've, is that, do you want to jump in there?
I, I do. We agreed to bring that, this back up in December.
Okay.
As something to see if we, something we wanted to, to engage in. Also, the Pledge of Allegiance at school board meetings, we also said we would bring that up in December as well, at our meeting last, last Tuesday.
Sorry about that.
And I have started doing my homework on land acknowledgements. I'm making some progress. You bet. Okay, so, hearing, any, any other thoughts or comments? Okay, could I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, by Richard, second by Kitty. Laura, could you please call the role to adjourn the meeting?
Garcia? Deb Hart? Deb Hart?
Yes.
Thank you. Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Motion passes.